Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande City Council meeting. So we'll call the meeting to order, and first order business is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. So I think, I think I saw.
Mr. Cunningham is here.
Yeah, Pastor Cunningham here, getting his temperature checked. And then please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to come tonight, pray with you.
Thank you for being here.
Father, we give all the honor and glory and praise to you. You are the one that spoke this world into existence with a word, Father. We thank you for that. Father, we also know that you appoint rulers and leaders, and you did that with the mayor and the city council. Father, I pray that you watch over and protect them, help them to make the right decisions, Father. Convince them, tell them what needs to be done, Father. I pray that you'd always keep them safe, because I'm sure they get a lot of calls that aren't so cool, and just watch over them, Father. I pray that everything that's said and done tonight will bring honor and glory to your name, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Bob. Okay, let the roll call show that everyone's here but Mr. Powell. Did someone like to offer him an absence excuse?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to excuse Mr. Powell from tonight's meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Let the roll calls show.
So noted.
The minutes. Someone like to?
Mayor McFarland, since Mr. Powell's not here, I would like to propose acceptance of the city council regular meeting minutes, January 19th, 2021, and except for the record, the Arts and Humanities Commission minutes dated September 1st, 2020, as presented.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Next is item D, claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for the approval and payment of the claims from January 13th to January 26th, as presented.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, the claims are approved for payment. Meeting agenda approval. Does anyone have any changes, adjustments? Larry, anything staff has?
Mayor McFarland, I move.
I have nothing. Does anybody else? No? Okay.
I move to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved. No special presentations. Next item is item G, consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone who has anything you want to remove from the consent agenda? Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agendas as presented.
So moved.
Second. Anyone second? Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our item I, which is award of contracts. First one is I-1, consider resolution number 5275. Chief, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna hear about all of these, right? I-1, I-2, I-3?
Right, we're just gonna, Mayor, we're just gonna do them, Lieutenant Ramirez is gonna do them all four at once.
I-4 also, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we, then we can vote separately when we get done.
That was our plan.
Perfect, thank you.
Tonight, Lieutenant Ramirez is gonna discuss our Stone Garden grants that we received on the initial allocation of money and equipment, and then a secondary allocation or reallocation of funds. And what happens is, just a real quick brief overview of that, every year, Stone Garden people get together, they give us a certain amount of money for overtime, and we're all aware of that, to pay the EREs and sometimes equipment. Well, this year, they gave us one bit of money initially for the overtime and EREs, and they gave us another bit of money for a piece of equipment. And then they went back midway through the year and looked at money that they weren't gonna spend, that other jurisdictions did not want to use, and then they reallocated some of that money out to people that already had an allocation. So as Mayor said, Lieutenant Ramirez is gonna, has a short PowerPoint, and is gonna go over all four of the items tonight in, in the order of, as they are listed on here, if he hasn't numbered up there.
Good evening. So before I get into the specific grants, I want to give just a brief overview of our Operation Stone Garden. So it's a program that the police department has been participating in since about 2011. It's a cooperative agreement between federal, state, and local agencies. And essentially what it does is it allows the Casa Grande Police Department to patrol the outlining areas of the city in addition to the officers that we already have patrolling inside the city limits. We're in a Stone Garden deployment session right now through a grant that we have through them. And as you can see, through May 2020, up until yesterday, we have had 245 deployments, about 4,000 hours worked, nearly 2,000 traffic stops, 1,500 warnings issued, 141 citations, 17 misdemeanor arrests, and 22 felony arrests. This is the reason why we believe we continue to get the grant funding from Operation Stone Garden. These four bullet points up here represent four individual traffic stops that officers have made, and you can see the amount of drugs that they've seized. Those are big, big numbers. And when you're looking at the fentanyl pills, it really takes one pill to kill somebody. So that's really, I don't even know how many pills 50 pounds would be, but it's a lot. You look at 30,000 fentanyl pills, that was probably about two weeks ago an officer got. That's essentially the way we look at it, is 30,000 lives saved, the 991 fentanyl pills, that was Friday night. So getting into the specific grants, the first is a Pima County reallocation. The overtime would be item I-1 on the agenda. That's for $276,265.65. And we have got it broken down for overtime, EREs, and mileage. And then what we're gonna ask for, what we are asking for in addition to that, is another 4x4 SUV. And that's gonna, we would equip it with police equipment, radio, and an optic. And an optic is essentially a night vision instrument that allows us to see at night. It reads heat signatures. And the fiscal, or the federal fiscal year 2020 award, which we would call our normal award, is for $324,967,000 in overtime, which is broken down before you, and then 30,000 for equipment, which is a handheld narcotics analyzer. The narcotic analyzer is important. When you reflect back on the fentanyl pills, we really don't want to be touching that stuff if we don't have to. And the narc analyzer will analyze that for us and tell you what we're dealing with, whether it be cocaine, meth, heroin. We can leave the drug in the packaging, so in addition to lessening the exposure to the officer, it also will preserve evidence for us. So that's kind of an important tool for us. And we have one 4x4 SUV right now that we currently use. This one would be in addition to it. We can only use it for Operation Stone Garden. Should there become an emergency in the city where all of our resources are being utilized, then we can use the SUV for whatever situation we're dealing with. It's gonna minimize the use of a regular fleet vehicle. It is in addition to the fleet for servicing purposes only, but once the vehicle reaches its end of life, then it'll be sent to auction. And the overtime will pay for the officers to patrol the areas that we're assigned to. It's gonna give law enforcement presence in areas that typically we're not out and about patrolling. The officers can respond to emergencies inside the city. And again, this is a non-matching grant, and EREs and mileage are covered. With that, I would answer any questions you may have.
Sounds like a win-win for us. Bob?
Just to comment, some of those recovered amounts of narcotics, especially the fentanyl, are shocking to me. I mean, I recall back in the day, working with the narcs as a sergeant, and we never saw anything close to that. I mean, when we got stuff, it was, you know, two or three little packets, but.
50 pounds.
Brian?
That's a lot.
Does, does Stone Garden allow for two officers in a vehicle working?
So that's how we deploy them. Each vehicle does have two officers.
Okay, that was my only concern. I, I love this program and clearly see the benefit. Is there any match requirement, or this is just all money to be spent on this program?
That's correct.
Good. Well, good work, 'cause I, I do know when they come back and offer additional funding, they do look at performance of the agency, and you guys are obviously doing a good job to be on their list for additional funding. So, thank you.
Matt, go ahead.
Thank you, Lieutenant Ramirez. I'm a big fan of Operation Stone Garden, too. Prevents a lot of stuff from happening in our community as well. Just a question, just so people know about the overtime. Is that regular officers we have, and we pay their overtime with that money? Or is it overtime just for the Stone Garden program?
It's overtime only for Stone Garden.
Donna?
Just a comment. First of all, I like the fact that we do not have to have matching funds. But it also is fiscal responsible, and that's what, you know, we're looking at in quality of life. But something that, that was mentioned about, you know, not touching the drugs, and that's, that's officer safety. And I think that that's really important for us, too. So, good job.
Anyone else? Lisa?
Just quickly, just to kind of, I mean, you talked about the overtime, but they are our officers, but we pay them overtime for Stone Garden. I mean, this is not for their regular, their regular jobs. They're above and beyond. They're.
Yes, they would work this on their days off.
Correct. Okay, and so I just wanted to say, do you find challenges right now staffing people? Or for the most part, do you get plenty of volunteers that say, I'll do this? Because I'm, you're right, I mean, I'm a huge, you know, supporter for this program. We've been doing it for years, and I know you guys do a fantastic job. I was just curious if you have a problem, you know, staffing this, and if with COVID now, if people are getting sick, is, you know, or do you have no issues?
We haven't really seen a problem. They're limited to two shifts. We'll set a date. So y'all are limited to two shifts. After that date, if there's opening, they can sign up for more. But usually, when the sheets go up, and they're pretty close to my office, there's people coming pretty routine, looking for Stone Garden, so we don't have a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Good job.
Alright, then, okay. Can I get a resolution for 5275?
Yes. Resolution number 5275, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing and ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for the City of Casa Grande, authorizing the city to accept grant funds from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security's Operation Stone Garden Grant Program in an amount up to $276,265.65, and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disburse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for the approval of resolution number 5275 as presented.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes, sorry.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Alright, the next resolution number. Gloria, can I get a resolution for 5276, please?
Resolution number 5276, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing and ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for the City of Casa Grande, authorizing the city to accept funds from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security's Operation Stone Garden Grant Program in an amount up to $74,104.14, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disburse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5276 as presented.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Alright, the next item is I-3. Need a resolution number for 5277?
Resolution 5277, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing and ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for the City of Casa Grande, authorizing the city to accept grant funds from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security's Operation Stone Garden Grant Program in an amount up to $324,967, and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disburse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5277 as presented. Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Alright, the next item is item four, and that's a consider resolution number 5278. Can I please get a resolution?
Resolution number two, resolution 5278, a resolution of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing and ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for the City of Casa Grande, authorizing the city to accept grant funds from the Arizona Department of Homeland Security's Operation Stone Garden Grant Program in an amount up to $30,000, authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, authorizing the city finance director to accept and disburse funds as necessary, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for the approval of resolution number 5278 as presented.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Oh, can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Alright, the next item on our agenda is I-5, and it is to consider an ordinance, number 3252, accepting a bid from Sanderson Ford. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve the expenditure of funds for one 2021 Ford F-450 XL crew cab stake bed truck from Sanderson Ford, Glendale, Arizona, in an amount not to exceed $61,605. And this is for the streets operations. Staff is requesting authorization to purchase this truck using the Colorado, or, excuse me, wrong state. Arizona State Contract Number ADSP 017-166123 for the purchase of this vehicle. The F-450 stake bed will be replacing the existing 2000 Ford F-650 crew cab that's been in service for quite a few years, just over 20 years. You'll see that it only has 63,000 miles on it, but many of those miles are idle miles. So most of the wear and tear is in the engine, and we're actually starting to have difficulty finding some of the parts to keep that truck going. We also went through an evaluation, and we decided to downsize this truck from the F-650 to an F-450. It gives us a lot more versatility with the vehicle, and we can use it for other things. Whereas the old truck was really one-purpose vehicle, and that was to run our crack seal program. And now that we're contracting a lot of that crack seal program out as part of our street maintenance program, we're able to really use this truck for other applications. We did bid for this project, or, excuse me, we did budget for this project in this fiscal year, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Matt? Kevin, just a comment. It makes me so happy you have a 20-year-old truck, and that you're buying a smaller truck, so, thank you. Just makes me so happy.
20-year-old truck.
Anybody else?
I'll ask the Matt question. We, we only had the one bid. We didn't have anything else.
We did not bid this out locally. We did use the process of going through the state bid process. We're, we're having some real difficulties with finding vehicles, period. With the shutdown of the plants and some of the equipment that car manufacturers need to build their vehicles, we're having a shortage of vehicles. So we decided to do the safe thing and go with the state bid. The, the larger dealerships are able to get the, the number of vehicles to support providing the vehicles that we need for state bid. And the F-450 with the state bed and the lift gate is specialized, and it was all package deal. So we got a great opportunity to get decreased prices for that, so.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, $61,000 seems a pretty reasonable price for that big a vehicle, so, plus that equipment on it, so. Thank you, Kevin. Alright, I'll consider an ordinance number, please. Gloria?
Ordinance number 3252, an ordinance of the council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Sanderson Ford for the purchase of a 2021 Ford F-450 XL crew cab truck with a slate bed, uplift, and lift gate, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Sanderson's Ford in accordance with the terms submitted to the Arizona state bid list.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 3252 as presented.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Alright, boards and commissions. Just a reminder, everybody, please sign up. We have some openings. And we have two gracious Casa Grande residents who have volunteered to be on a couple of our boards and commissions, and I want to personally thank them, and I know the council thanks them for their service. The first is item J-1, considering approving the reappointment of Carmelita Menya to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term to expire on February 1st. Is, is Carmelita here? Don't see her, but I just want to publicly thank her. I know the council publicly thanks you as well for your service. And really, really do appreciate it, because we can't run our boards and commissions without our volunteers, so. And I know it is greatly appreciated. Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve, reapprove. Carmelita?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you again, Carmelita. J-2 is consider approving the reappointment of Michael Etheridge to the Police Advisory Board with the term to expire on February 20th, 2023. Is Michael here? I think so, okay. Again, a big thank you to Michael Etheridge and his volunteering for the reappointment to the Police Advisory Board. I'll entertain a motion to approve his reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Again, thank you, Michael, for your, for volunteering. Next is our public hearings. We're gonna move into our public meetings, public hearings, and open records review. Item L-1. and open records review. Item L1 is the first public hearing, and it's to consider ordinance Number 1397.17.51.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
First one is the R4 Zone District Private Streets. It's a code text amendment. So the city of Casa Grande is requesting a zoning code text amendment to delete city code 1720.580, which is required street and right-of-way width. It states, "All streets in an R4 district shall be public unless approved as private as part of a planned area development." So the purpose of this request is intended to ensure that the city of Casa Grande code is consistent, logical, and implementable and applicable. So Code Section 1720.580 would apply to any property located in the mobile home residential or the R4 Zone District. The concern with this code is that it prohibits the use of private streets within those R4 mobile home or manufactured home parks. So many of the R4 zoned manufactured home developments prefer to utilize the private streets so they can gate them, gives them a sense of security and perceived added value to the project. In some past manufactured home projects, they have accomplished this by requesting the PAD. That brings up more complications because it doesn't meet all the PAD Design Guidelines standards, so they have to ask for a lot of exceptions to those residential design guidelines. So eliminating this code section would simplify the request for a gated manufactured home park with private street network. From the city's perspective, the use of private streets eliminates the maintenance requirements on the city and puts it on the park ownership. That includes the streets and sewer infrastructure that's within those parks. So the removal of this code section would provide manufactured home developments some flexibility for the proposed street network, but would not eliminate any fire department regulations or public work requirements regarding the width or the construction standards of the streets. So we did send out a notice, or we had it published in the paper. We didn't receive any comments. The planning commission on a 7-0 vote recommended to mayor and city council to approve DSA 2000172, deleting city code section 1720.580. And that ends the presentation.
Does anyone have any questions? So we would, we would set up some standards, right, that they would have to have minimum width sizes on the streets, right?
That would already be set with Public Works, so it's already in our code.
So fire has room to move through the streets and all that good stuff.
And it would all be reviewed as well at the time of major site plan.
Okay. All right, thank you, Joe. Any other questions?
Just a statement. I want to thank your department, Paul, also, for looking at these. I think what we have seen in the recent past and those that are looking to develop are impressive. Most of them are 55-plus neighborhoods. They're gated. They're well-managed, and I think we're going to see more of them in the future as the, as the baby boomers, I'm one of which, as we get older and want a retirement area, I think that these mobile homes in private neighborhoods are very attractive, and I appreciate you looking at it to, to kind of facilitate those developers coming in and wanting to develop these neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bob. I think that's it. Thank you.
I've got the next presentation.
Oh, okay. We'll get, we'll get this. You can stay up there if you want, Joe. It's all right. All right, so this is a public hearing, so I want to open the floor. Since the council has no questions, I'm going to open the floor to the public. Is there anyone here who is here to discuss this ordinance Number 1397.17.51 and the change in our code? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance Number 1397.17.51, an ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending Chapter 17.20 Residential Zones of the City of Casa Grande Municipal Code pertaining to public streets for the mobile home residential zone, District R4, by removing Section 17.20.580 Required Streets and Right-of-Way Widths, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for the approval of ordinance Number 1397.17.51 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, the next item is item L2, and again, another public hearing, and to consider ordinance Number 1178.406, and this is changing the zoning from urban ranch to general industrial. You're up.
All right, number two. Tom Pender is requesting a zone change from urban ranch to general industrial for approximately 255 acres of land. It's generally located north of Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway and east of Bianco. You can see the location highlighted in yellow there, just up the way from Frito Lay. The site, along with other surrounding properties, was recently annexed into the city. The purpose of this zoning change request is to align the zoning with the existing general plan, land use category, and potentially place the property for industrial projects. So recently, the property directly to the west was rezoned into that I2 general industrial category as well. The public notice that reached this landowner and prompted this request. So if the zone change was to be approved, all uses permitted and/or conditional in the I2 Zone District would be allowed and will be required to obtain approval of a major site plan in the future. So when looking at the zone change request, we look that the proposed action, proposed use shall be in conformance with the general plan. First one is that the action is consistent with the city's general plan, including the goals, policies, and all applicable elements. Among other items that support this request, the area for the proposed request lies in the Phase One or the primary growth area of the general plan. The requested zoning of I2 is appropriate in the manufacturing and industry land use category. We do have Policy C8.2.1, require mitigation measures or restrict development in areas subject to flooding. So this site, you can see on this graphic here, is impacted by the 100-year flood zone. The applicant will be required to provide a drainage analysis as part of any future submittal with that major site plan, and they would have to ensure that they're addressing any of those flooding issues and that it's mitigated. So there are some options for those, for the applicants to ensure that they're meeting all our flood zone regulations. The next one is rezoning conforms to the general plan if it proposes land uses densities or intensities within the range of identified uses of the general plan. Again, the request for a zone change to I2 is an allowable and appropriate land use within the general plan.
Joe, on this slide, that green area that's down below there, isn't that being proposed to go into industrial in our new general plan?
It is. I will, it will all be in the new general plan as manufacturing industry. The annexation paperwork will be filed this week, as long with the zone changes being prompted as well.
And those houses that are in the yellow there, those really aren't there?
No, those are just lots at this time. There might be a few scattered in there.
Okay, all right.
But most, most of them are vacant lots.
Okay.
Did I cover the rest of that slide? Oh, yeah, I think we covered on that. Number three, the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. So this zone change will allow the current owner to market and develop and utilize the property and potentially extend infrastructure, including roads, in that area, which may facilitate or prompt other industrial development in the area as well. This zone change will also create a continuous industrial corridor along Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway. So public notice, matter exceeded all code requirements. We sent, mailed out to people within 300 feet. Sign was posted at the site. We didn't receive any comments on this particular request. The planning commission on a 7-0 vote recommended, recommend the mayor and city council approve the zone change request, DSA 2000176 from urban ranch, UR to general industrial I2, with the following condition: At the time of request by the city, the owner shall dedicate required Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway right-of-way. And that ends the presentation.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, Bob? That last stipulation, is that enforceable? I mean, is, if that's part of the ordinance to change the zoning when the time comes, and if they say we don't want to dedicate the right-of-way, is that?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Huddleston. And I wasn't involved in the, you know, the actual drafting of this one, but I understand the applicant is agreeing to this condition. Generally, they do have to do the right-of-way at the time of development. I believe they put this condition in to simply say, "If we were doing the roadway sooner," because it's a city project, that they would dedicate it at that time. Otherwise, we'd be dealing with a condemnation. So I certainly, you know, I don't know if the applicant is here to speak to, you know, to that condition.
And that's, that was generally a curiosity question. I've just never seen that before, and I didn't know, so I appreciate the answer.
Well, isn't this, isn't this property in the, in the right-of-ways, it's old county, so it's like, the property goes in the middle of the highway?
Most likely. I haven't done the, you know, the, any of the title work. You know, I think ordinarily, when we do development, then there is conditions in our code that require the dedication to right-of-way. So I believe that the reason that planning was asking for this particular condition was in the event that we went to develop the roadway prior to the time that they developed their property, because, and sometimes we'll do that, and we may be dealing with one piece of the project, and we know that as we develop it, sometimes what we see is we see one piece develops, the other one, we don't have the right-of-way yet, and the other piece is developed. So it's develop, nothing, develop. And so this is, I think, designed to try to avoid that if necessary.
And we have a conflict, too, in the county where there's county roads. The county or the property owners own the road, the middle of the road. Where city roads, we have the right-of-way.
In many places, yes. Sometimes they're easements, sometimes they're rights-of-way. It really depends, and many times when we're doing that work, we look at that.
This is just an attempt to simplify that process, I think.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Any other questions, anybody? Okay. Thank you. Now, this is a public hearing, so I will open the floor to the public at this point in time, since the council has no more questions. Is there anybody from the public who would like to say anything? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll close the floor and call for a ordinance number, please.
Ordinance Number 1178.406, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from urban ranch to general industrial on approximately 255.5 acres of property, generally located north of Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway and east of Bianco Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland?
Go ahead. Go for it.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance Number 1178.406.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, the next item is item L3. Again, a public hearing. This is to consider ordinance Number 1178.239.1, amending a zoning ordinance Number 1178. Joe?
Councilmember Huddleston, you'll get your wish on the request for a manufactured home park here. All right. All right, so George McGavin is requesting a zone change from the Desert Views PAD to mobile home residential, which is the R4 district, for approximately 58 acres of land generally located east of Thornton and north of O'Neal Drive. You can see it highlighted in the red below. The applicant is proposing the zone change to facilitate the development of the Buttes at Sundance. The Buttes is an estimated 267-unit mobile home park community. Staff feels that this zone change is an appropriate transition between the industrial development to the south, you can see highlighted in purple, the traditional residential developments to the north and the east, shown in the yellow, and it blends in well with the other manufactured home parks that are located throughout that area. The proposed project is currently zoned PAD for Desert Views. Desert Views completed a preliminary plat, not a final plat, and it was not recorded, and received a certificate for assured water supply or cause for 200 preliminary platted lots. This cause certificate is not valid for the current ownership, but it is the city's understanding that it could be reassigned in accordance with ADWR regulations. So this project is not intending to utilize the cause, as they are proposing to develop the site as a leased space manufactured home park under a single ownership. However, since single-family residential is a permitted use within the R4 Zone District, the site could still be developed as a single-family subdivision and utilize those cause. So just a little general overview, in the general plan, it's located in the neighborhoods and category. When you see the current zoning is PAD, the requested zoning is R4. So again, when looking at a zone change, we look at the review criteria that the proposed use shall be in conformance with the general plan. The action is consistent with the city's general, or, excuse me, I'll go into the specifics. The action is consistent with the city's general plan, including the goals, policies, and applicable elements. Among other items, this request is supported by the following. It is, it does lie in our Phase One or primary growth area. The requested, the requested zoning of mobile home residential is appropriate in the neighborhood's land use category. Policy C4.7.1 encourage a variety of neighborhood design and development patterns. This is an area that has multiple manufactured home parks. It also has multifamily, single-family developments in the vicinity. So staff feels that this is an actual good corridor for this use. And then Policy C4.1.4, support infill development in areas where infrastructure, capacity, and services are already in place and available. So this is surrounded by development, so a lot of the infrastructure's in place. The next criteria is a rezoning conforms to the general plan if it proposes land uses, densities, or intensities within the range of identified uses of the general plan. The request for a zone change to R4 is an allowable and appropriate land use within the neighborhood's category. The proposed use is limited to a density of 4.5 dwelling units per acre, allowing the 58.77-acre park to provide 267 units, and that's how we got to that unit count. A conceptual plan was submitted with this proposal. However, the precise layout number of units will be solidified at the time of a major site plan submittal, which would be their next step. Number three is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. So the zone change will allow the city to expand on its manufactured home supply that has been consistently utilized in the last five years. Historically, manufactured home have represented approximately 15% of the city's housing stock. The existing manufactured The existing manufactured home inventory is dwelling, is dwindling in the city. However, we have had three significant projects in development, plus the addition of this proposal. The city's in a good position to continue to offer this type of product. So, public notice, matter exceeded all city requirements. Staff received two letters from a single resident in Desert Crossing opposing the zone change. We did receive a phone call opposing the zone change, and then multiple residents from the surrounding area spoke in opposition to the proposed request at the Planning Commission public hearing. The Planning Commission on a 7-0 vote recommend the mayor and city council approve the zone change request, DSA 2000152, from P A D to Mobile Home Residential, R4, within, with the following conditions: No RV spaces permitted abutting the northern or eastern perimeter of the park. One of the stipulations in the R4 zone district is that you're allowed to have up to 10% be utilized for RV spaces. And staff wanted to make sure that we had compatibility with the surrounding neighborhoods, so we're limiting where those RV spaces could be placed. And you can see a graphic there showing it.
So, the orange, orange would require a manufactured home in that, those locations?
Correct, yeah.
Are they gonna be ground set?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a similar project. It's the Sundance group, so it's gonna be similar to the, what's being developed right now at Sundance 2.
Okay.
But we'll see that at a future time in the major site plan.
Go ahead, Bob.
You addressed how many mobile home spaces there would be, and you also addressed where RVs could or could not go. Does either of those classifications include park models?
The RV would be, the RV stipulation is park models.
Okay. I recall that was an issue at a previous development, and-
The spaces will all be sized for manufactured home. The intent for Sundance in the past has been to possibly market their, their manufactured home park by utilizing RVs for a time and hoping that tho, those people that are using, using their RV will want to build a manufactured home there.
Okay. And also, on the, the issue of assured water supply, it almost sounded like they were on the fence, that if they, if they can utilize the cause, that they may shift back towards single-family development? Or no? Did I miss something?
They would have the ability to. I, I think their intent is to have it as a leased space manufactured home park.
Okay.
Their business model doesn't fit to, to individually plat those lots and sell the lots. They'd like control over the park.
And Joe, I'm sorry I interrupted you. You weren't done yet, were you?
Hmm?
You weren't done yet, were you?
No, I'm done. That's the end of the presentation.
You're done, okay, okay. I didn't know if you were ready for questions.
No, I, no, I was ready. I'm sorry. I kinda jumped the slide and then came back to the end of the presentation. I just wanted to show.
And I have a follow-up on Councilmember Huddleston. As far as the certificate of assured water, I saw there was a lot of discussion in the planning and zoning meeting, and so, you know, several of the neighbors were worried that we're gonna be giving up those certificates, and if they go to this particular project. Would we be able to use those if he decides to do this and lease the spaces and not have to use those assured water certificates? Can, can we use them for another development close by? It's just for that particular?
Yeah, so the-
They're not transferable.
Through ADWR, yeah, you can't transfer it. It has to stay within the same envelope of where they were issued.
They can, they can be transferred from owner to owner, but it stays with the property.
Yeah, it stays in that same envelope of the property.
Okay.
You can make modifications in there to a certain extent.
Unfortunately.
But it all has to stay.
Yeah, right. And, and I think we need to remember, of course, you know, like you said, that there's three big projects, you know, what, you know, the mobile home and, and manufactured housing in the last year or whatever, but, you know, I mean, to have these, you know, diverse projects and, and, you know, to have affordable or workforce housing, we know there's a, there's a need. And so, you know, I, I like the idea of how it flows and what, you know, the surrounding areas, and obviously, you took into consideration when you put the orange line around with the RVs, I think that, you know, we talked about that, that last project, you know, making sure that we're not putting the, the mobile units around to where the, the residents, the other houses are. So, you know, I, I do like the idea of, of offering, continuing to offer these options in our community. There's definitely a need. The mayor and I have spent a lot of time and research on, on the, the options that are out there for our community, so.
Donna?
Just, and you answered quite a few of the questions that I had, but you had mentioned about the 15% of our city's stock, housing stock, is usually where we're at with, with mobile homes and park models. I know that we've had some projects that we've already, you know, seen. Where are we in that 15% mark?
We didn't do a full analysis of that at this point. We can actually, we can put those numbers together for you if you'd like. We did, in the last three years, approve approximately 508 manufactured home spaces. There's another 200-plus RV spaces that have been approved in, since 2018, that are either in some sort of development stage or, or at least entitled for that, but we didn't do a full breakdown of those numbers.
And then, just for clarification, it's my understanding this is not a 55-plus. It has not been determined to be a 55-plus. And I know that you had asked a question about the ground set. Are these going to be new park models only?
Yeah, they would all be new park model homes. I believe the intent would be to be 55-plus manufactured home project.
I thought in the-
That tends to be the business model.
Yeah, someone asked a couple times. Somebody asked, and they couldn't answer that, so.
Yeah.
Well, maybe the developer's here, and he can answer that question.
Yeah. And, and that's a good point.
Well, we can, when we throw it open to the public.
Thank you very much.
Matt?
I had a concern from a citizen about two things. One, on the west side of the pro, I know it's kinda hard because we're not doing the final design, but so basically off of Thornton Road- You know, there's a house there to the, the south, and that, that green, I don't know if it's the same owner of that other L-shaped piece right there. Where would the entrances be and where?
I don't believe that is in the same ownership, but I'm not 100% sure. Right now, that parcel's completely vacant and is zoned Urban Ranch. They, they could develop it as a single-family home. Urban Ranch does also support manufactured homes with a conditional use permit. We also did receive a call from a gentleman, and it's in the cul-de-sac across the street that's kind of in, wedged in between Sundance 1 stuff, that was concerned with some of this, some of the cause, the aspects of it, and more manufactured homes in that area. Planning's position was, was it's a good location for this particular request, just there, there is a salvage yard just to the south, and, and single-family homes near the salvage yard weren't super appealing to our, to a planning, so we felt this was a good transitional use.
I was gonna say, I mean, especially because of the salvage yard side on the south. Now, the other thing that would, but the, but the RVs are only limited or restricted from the north and the east side, right? But not that little part by that house there?
Not, not at this time, where the applicant could be open to that proposal. They do have an entrance going out, most likely to Thornton Road, at least in their conceptual plan, which, which in itself eliminates some of that, because they-
That's what I was wondering if that's gonna be their entrance.
Yeah.
And if I'm not mistaken, they're building one on the north side of the water tower right now. Is that correct?
They are, yeah, that's also Sundance. So, they, you can see the brown piece up on the west, too, is Sundance 2. Desert Sky Ranch is just north of the tower, and that's, that's the same ownership group. They're, they're contemplating having roads go through, so we have good connectivity through there as well. Again, we'll, we'll evaluate that at time of major site plans submittal, though.
And when would the track, the traffic impact that's at the major site?
That would be at the major site plan. They would need to extend O'Neal through, at least to their property boundary. Improvements on Thornton, and so, but we would analyze that at time of major site plan.
And then, one more, because water's the one that's coming up here, too, and I know we can't transform anything, but do you know any statistics about single-family home water use versus manufactured home?
It, it's lower for manufactured home. It's about 25% lower for a manufactured home park than a traditional.
And there's a little more manufactured homes, and maybe if it's 55-plus, maybe less, but that would leave the groundwater table about the same than-
I think this would be a little bit less. If we did a little, I did a calculation before Planning Commission hearing, and it came out to be a little bit less water use for this proposal than the 200 single-family lots.
So, it'd be less, yeah, okay, so that would be more groundwater tech?
Potentially.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Okay, I have a couple questions. One is, do we, how many total residents came out in opposition? Counting who showed up, the letters you got.
So, I got two letters, but it was from the same gentleman in the Desert Crossing, which is just to the north and east of this site. Then I did receive a phone call with mul, there's just one gentleman who was in the cul-de-sac wedged in between Sundance. There were multiple, that was a long conversation, so there's a lot covered in that one. And then, we had, I would say, five or six come to the Planning Commission.
From Desert Sky?
From just surrounding area, yeah.
Desert Sky, Desert Sky is that piece that's up a right corner, right?
Just to the, Desert Sky's just to the north, so Desert Sky's directly north of this.
Well, they're also, I think they're also east there.
Desert Crossing is, Desert Crossing is across the street from Desert Sky there. So, the single-family residential just directly north of this project is Desert Sky.
Is there a single family that's also east of this?
The east would be Desert Crossing.
Okay, okay.
And then, there's the, just north of the apartments that you see there.
But there's, there were all, all that's single family.
Oh, there's multifamily directly east, too.
Right, the apartment complex is, is-
Yeah, so ju, directly north of the apartment complex, Desert Crossing, that's where the phone call came from.
It also butts east.
Or the, the letter, excuse me.
It also butts a single family to the east, so there's a single family that gets right but to the back of the multifamily.
Yeah, just north is Desert Sky. There's a 50-foot, it's owned by the Desert Sky HOA, it's a 50-foot. It was originally a drainage easement, not used for drainage, though, so it's, but it's, there's a separation between the park or this proposal and Desert Sky by a 50-foot.
Okay, so will that, is that Schultz Street? Will Schultz Street come all the way down and through? And will O'Neal, and will O'Neal be built out all the way over to Thornton?
Not all the way to Thornton, it'll end at their property line. For their, their improvements, would end at the property line.
Would it behoove us to take it all the way to Thornton?
We would analyze that at time of the major site plan and, and have to coordinate that with our traffic engineer and make sure we can get it right-of-way.
Kind of in line with this not, kind of in line with this not, not having half-completed streets.
We would, yeah, ideally, that's how it would work. However, development would, the city would be on the hook for that portion of improvements.
Correct, like we are on Pierce Road.
Correct.
Okay.
So, it's, so the, but the applicant for this would stop at their property line.
Okay. Then, also, this is getting pretty crowded with a lot of the manufactured homes. I mean, there's a lot of manufactured homes, even, even north, all the way up to the, to our park, to Dave White.
Right.
And so, Thornton's just two lanes, and it's starting to get pretty busy. It's also a major entrance to our industrial park to the south, and a lot of people now are using it as a bypass to avoid Cottonwood and, and Penall Avenue. So, is there any plan by all of these, this development, which in my understanding is one person, one developer? All that Sundance, all that North Sundance, all of this project to help in that improvement on Thornton? Is there any plans for that?
So, each time they've done a submittal for the major site plan, there, there's been some improvements for Sundance 2, for turn lanes, and for Desert Sky Ranch, the Desert Sky Ranch undeveloped piece, to do turn lanes. There's no, that I'm aware of, any plans to widen Thornton in that area.
Okay, maybe I'll ask the developer, and then when he gets up. I also want to make, make my feelings known in terms of these cause. There's 200 certificates of assured water. Those are like gold, and I'm really, really skeptical of letting a development go in that's not gonna utilize the certificate of assured water. You can't get them. They're not issuing any. We haven't issued, the state hasn't issued any in six years. We have a limited number of certificates in the city for single-family development, which you have to have. And so, I'm a, I'm a bit not happy with the fact that they, they will go away. They'll basically just go away. So, I'm, I'm gonna have a tough time letting that happen. So, just my opinion. And, you know, because it, once they're gone, they're gone. And so, we, we have several still left, but a lot of them have been snapped up with this, with all the blooming, the development we have. And I, and I'd like to know, at the current rate of these permits that we are issuing, you know, how long, how long do we have before we are out of cause? How long before we are out of any potential new home builders? I mean, we're working on some pro, you know, program, programs right now for water conservation and, and a water resource plan, but that's a, that's a couple of years away. It's not gonna happen overnight. So, and I'm, Joe, I'm not, I'm not yelling at you. I'm, so I apologize if it sounds like I'm yelling at you. But it's, I'm pretty passionate about this, about, especially about water, and water for our city, so I, I'm torn right now, so.
Yeah, we certainly covered it with the applicant, at the application process time.
And was P&amp;Z made aware that this had certificates of assured water?
Yeah, they were, they were given the exact same presentation. There, there's few tweaks, but, but it was definitely out front and center.
Obviously, not as passionate about water as I am, then.
I, well, I think there's a whole range of things that, that we all, we don't disagree with that sentiment. We have about a 20-year supply of, of single-family homes right now at the current rate.
Okay. All right. That's assuming the rate doesn't go up.
Yeah, exactly. We had a pretty good year last year.
Yeah, yeah. Well, any, anything's possible. Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Joe?
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
I had a couple more. One to your point about the water, Mayor, and the other thing, too, about 200 single-family homes versus 267 manufactured homes. I mean, that's, it's about the same number, but we, we would lose a lot of impact fee dollars, if I'm not mistaken, for single-family homes versus the mobile, I'm sorry, versus the manufactured homes.
Yeah, it's around, it's $3,000 to $4,000, somewhere in that range.
Per?
Per, per unit.
Yeah. And then, the other thing would be, my question, it was brought up, but I didn't get, I think I understood it, along the north border, there's a 50-foot buffer already, for that, that was a drainage easement. And then, what's the buffer from the wall, or is that, is it just 50, and then they, the, the manufactured homes can go right up to the, I mean, whatever the distance is from the wall?
Yeah, so they would have a, they, they could put, place their wall there, and then they have a 10-foot setback to the manufactured home.
Okay. But the wall would be at about 50 feet, and then the manufactured home, then 10 feet?
The wall could be set directly at 50 feet.
Yeah, and I just want to say, too, I, I admire Sundance. They do a really nice job, they have a nice product, so I'm not, this is nothing against them or their product or your, or their company, I just, so I want to make sure that's clear. I, I might get a little passionate with that water statement, so, so I apologize. Anybody else have any questions for Joe before I open the floor to the public? Because I think we do want to hear from the developer. You guys, you guys okay with that? Okay? So, seeing no more questions from council, which doesn't mean we won't have more questions by the time we're done, but I'm, I am gonna open the floor to the public, since this is a public hearing, so please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Did you want to hear from, uh, the developer first or the, or the residents? What would you prefer? I'm here on behalf of the developer, Mr. Gavin.
We'd be happy to hear from you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Uh, Mayor and council members, it's a pleasure to be here tonight in Casa Grande. It's been a long time. My name is Ralph Pugh. My office address is in Mesa, seventeen forty-four South Valvista Drive. Um, it's a pleasure to be here, honestly, on behalf of Mr. George McGavin and his partners and their companies. As the mayor indicated, they do own and operate Sundance One, Two, and Three. They're building Desert Sky. They have fair views, uh, fairways that are going on and this project. They do this throughout the valley and they have significant interest in this and they are very, very good at it. And they develop a nice project. This project will have amenities, pickleball court, bocce ball, indoor community center, outdoor, you know, the pool, all those good things that make it, uh, what Mayor Pro Tem mentioned. We're both in that category, right? I'm, I'm, I'm well beyond it. So I've been thinking about that, right? So can I just answer a few questions? The, Mr. Horn and Mr. Tice have done a really good job working with us over the months and the presentation was thorough. So can I just hit on a few points that I think are important on some of your minds here tonight? One, the lot sizes in this mobile home, uh, residential project are five thousand to sixty-five hundred square feet. Now, our firm has the pleasure of representing many, many home builders up in the valley. And those lot sizes are very, very common today. It's the, it's the standard development through most of the valley, that that's what stick built, as we call them, homes are located on. So this project is not going to have the feel of a very tight, um, development of the old mobile home parks. These are good-sized lots, so I just wanted to remind you of all of that. Um, secondly, I think this whole water issue is clearly one of some importance, uh, certainly to the mayor and others who have spoken, uh, and many of you. I, I think there's just a little bit of misnomer here and misunderstanding about cause and water supply. The certificate of assured water supply is a creature of statute that has been around for years and it requires administrative approval by ADWR. The rules, the science, uh, the geotech efforts about that, the water hydrology issues are all really complicated. And we couldn't begin to talk about them here tonight. But for us to think that because a property has a cause, therefore it's some valuable asset, it is valuable only, Mayor and Council, if you want to think about it this way, if there's a home builder interested in developing that property. Otherwise, it's worthless. And, and I think a way to look at this, if you, if you would, is to think about when this all happened. This was two thousand and six, when this property was zoned as a PAD for single-family residences and received a certificate of assured water supply. What happened overnight? The economy falls apart. Two thousand and seven comes, two thousand and eight exists, two thousand and nine, we started breathing again a little bit, ten, we had life, eleven and twelve, it was totally average. Thirteen and fourteen, the home building industry began again to resurrect from where it had been, completely gone. Believe me, I know that, cause our law firm represents home builders. And all you gotta do is look at our clients for those few years and they weren't there. So, so I guess what I try to urge you tonight to think about, if you could, on this one? If this property were really well situated for single-family dwellings, stick-built dwellings, it would have been done by now. Or the developers would be waiting in line, knocking on the door of the property owner to do it. There's got to be other reasons besides the certificate, most of which is probably its adjacency to the industrial zoning and what could ultimately occur there. And, and so I would just kind of urge you to kind of put that in your mix as you think about it. Um, the other thought came up tonight, which, which was an interesting one about impact fees. Impact fees on this site are going to be zero until a single-family home builder comes along. If they will. And honestly, the way we see it going today and how fast it's happening, we have home builder clients calling us every day, "Look at this piece, look at that piece, let's look at this one, let's go out here." If they were interested in that one, we or other people would be here asking for that subdivision approval and formalizing it. So please think about that as you evaluate this case. It will be fifty-five and above. Uh, that's, uh, the way, uh, Mr. McGavin operates, uh, most of his parks. The road improvements, Mr. Mayor, that is always the case, isn't it? You improve the frontage on your property and then there's a gap. Um, so that is a topic that I'm sure will be discussed somewhat at the site plan review. It'll also probably come about when the industrial property to the south develops and when those properties adjacent develop. And if they don't, then that's always a conversation with municipal of funding or how that happens. But tonight, I don't think any of us are prepared to discuss the substance of that at this point. That'll come up later and, and we'll re, uh, deal with those issues as they arise. Um, what else was there? Let's see. Thornton, you're right, needs some attention here and north, clearly. Um, and that'll have to be paid attention to. Um, again, I, I'd like to take your whole evening, but you've been here a long time and the staff did a great job presenting this. Here you have a case coming to you with staff recommendation. You have a unanimous P and Z uh, recommendation and we would urge you to support this case. Again, a quality project by Mr. McGavin and I, I'd ask you to not to get too, Mayor, and I know you, we're all focused on water, right? I'm native of Mesa for four generations. I know water's important. But I don't think the cause is the key. It is if residential development wants to occur. I just don't think it does or it would have. So with that, we appreciate your attention. We urge your vote in support of this case tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, to the extent I can.
So is that Schultz Street gonna be brought all the way through? You mean O'Neal?
Oh, the, the improvement?
The east, the east side?
I think they've talked about that, haven't they, Mr. Horn?
Schultz is there. They, they, they would be there half the street.
So would they bring the street all the way down to O'Neal?
To O'Neal. Well, it, it's already existing there.
Oh, it does? Okay. I can't tell because of the red dashes or.
Yeah, we would do our half.
So then they'd widen it on their half?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. And if, if there are comments from neighbors that deserve a, a moment of rebuttal, I might ask you for that if possible. I'm not sure what your protocol is, so that'd be nice.
We're pretty open.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the, the neighborhood or anyone else who would like to speak on this project? Okay, I see a hand over there. Let him clean the microphone and you can come on up to the microphone, just tell us who you are and, uh, give us your address, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Gussia. I live on, uh, Desert Crossing, six, seven, seven West Viola Street, which is across for the development it's gonna be. So, uh, my concern is about the value. When they do this, how the value is gonna be turned out in our houses? Is it gonna be drop or is it gonna be high? How that thing is gonna work and also?
Well, if they're, if they're ground set, then they won't be any higher than a single-level home in any neighborhood. So if you have a single family home in your neighborhood, you're off of Viola, right? Is that what you said?
Right, six, seven, seven.
So you're right next to them.
Yes.
Um, if there's a single-family home there, they would not be any taller than that single-family. In fact, probably a little lower.
Yeah, but about, what about the price?
About the value of that home?
Oh, the price.
Yeah, what about the price, the value of that compared to mine?
They're purchased, they purchased the, the manufactured home and then they lease a space.
Hmm, so.
So I don't know, maybe the developer could answer what, what would that average price of that type of a home if, if you sold the property with it?
And how would it affect?
Yeah, that's right.
How it affects the value around there?
Is value.
Yeah.
Yeah, that I don't know. Um, we, we have them all over the city. I mean, it's not like this is the only, uh, manufactured home, uh, facility. I live at Coyote Ranch and there's one across the street from my home. And my home, our homes have some of the highest values in the city. So, you know, we're separated, but with a street, you know, Rodeo Road separates us. So I'm just speaking from me, my personal experience. Uh, plus there's the apartment complex that's down, just down the street from, um, my home, my development. So we have mixed use all around the city. I think if it's done right and I, if you go by Sundance and you take a look at Sundance's facility, they are, they're very, uh, quality, uh, manufactured home and, and a, you know, mobile home type park. So their, their oldest one is the one that's right there off Thornton and, uh, the Maricopa Highway. And then the newest piece is the one that's just north of that horse that's on top of the rock. Uh, if you've been down Thornton, that's the newest piece they just put in.
Mayor, I, I could say the oldest one is about twenty, just over twenty years old, still kept up very nicely.
It still looks nice.
And then the newer one has much bigger lots and it's also, all the ground set, much like what, what they're proposing here. And, and their, their company's known for keeping, you know, they don't want a bad area either. It's not.
Yeah, they've owned these homes.
Not traditional like, I, I don't want to say, you know, but mobile home parks. It's more of a resort type thing.
Yeah.
And I'm, I don't know about values, cause I'm not an appraiser. I don't know if anyone can speak to that or, but I think they value the same type of home in the area, you know? But I, I don't know about that, but I appreciate it.
That helps you or not?
Yeah, well, the other concern is about the traffic. I mean, I don't know if that's gonna be a good idea, I guess. I mean, we don't have no stoplights. We don't have no stop signs. Not on O'Neal, on the other street, on, uh, what was it called? The, the one from, uh, north to south.
Yeah, the Schultz.
Schultz, right. And I mean, I just leave right there and I could see people flying.
Where's, where's the entrance gonna be?
The, uh, the original, uh, entrance was, they'll have three. They'll have one on, uh, Thornton. Uh, they'll have another one on Schultz. They'll have another one on O'Neal. Have additional connections to Desert Sky Ranch, cause these are the conceptual sites that they have. Uh, showing, I don't know if it's been fully determined which are gonna make their, their main entrance. Yet, uh, they just showed those four connections at this point.
And they'll all be open, they'll be gated, but they'll be?
Yeah, they'll take advantage of the private street, um, network, so they'll, they'll be gated. Uh, again, traffic impact analysis will be provided at time of major site plan to determine what improvements need to be made, including streetlights, stop signs, uh, extra lanes, turn lanes.
So there's another opportunity for, um, public input at, at that meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and the neighbors will get notification?
Yeah, as soon as we get the application in, uh, we will send out an application giving to, uh, the residents around the property and then we'll send out another one, uh, giving the dates of the year.
Yeah, and whether this was a manufactured home facility or a single family, you're still gonna have some traffic impact. Because that, that, that development would connect to Schultz anyway. So there would be potential, and Viola Street might even become a street that actually goes into that development. In this case, it won't because this is private streets.
Right.
In this particular case.
Right.
So that's, that's a, that's a good thing about, about it being a manufactured park, because it, it will be gated.
Right, so I'm concerned about more than noise too, you know, how, how much the noise gonna be like, you know, in and out, traffic, like.
These people are fifty-five and older.
Well, yeah, I know, but I, I didn't see that.
They get loud at four o'clock and they're in bed by nine.
All right, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other, uh, public comment? Just give us your name and, and where, your address, please.
Um, James Andreano. Uh, my parents live at seventeen twenty-nine North Thornton Road, which would be, uh, well, just north of the Sundance entrance across the canal. Um, they've lived there for forty-plus years. Uh, we're against it.
They on the east side of Thornton?
On the west side of Thornton.
Where that little cul-de-sac is right there?
Where the, there's three homes in that, uh, in the green.
So right, right between Sundance North and Sundance South?
Yeah, the, the Sundance One has the entrance right on the south side of the canal.
Right, right south, south of your property?
Yeah.
Your parents' property, okay.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, we're concerned about the impact fees, um, exists, existing. Um, looks like the city will lose about three hundred thousand in impact fees. Um, the Thornton Road will need to be widened. Um, you know, who pays for all the improvements? Is the current landowners gonna pay? Have to pay and be assessed for that? Um, mobile homes are cheaper to purchase but depreciate over time. Therefore, there's less tax revenue for the city, um, that must provide the same services, fire, police, trash, sewer. Um, there's gonna be costs that the city's gonna implement by this project going in. And even if a mo- if regular houses go in, there's still gonna be a cost. But you're gonna gain more money in impact fees. Um, then you have to staff the fire department yearly, you know, for a full-year job. And fifty-five plus, more than likely, is probably gonna be seasonal residents that are only gonna be here supporting our restaurants, our businesses, seasonally through the year, which is, brings in tax revenue. Um, mobile homes have an effect on lowering property values of surrounding conventionally-built homes, neighborhoods. This lowering tax revenues for the neighborhoods around it. Um, CG, I pulled this up off of a, uh, survey, said it had seventeen point eight percent mobile homes and sixty-four percent, uh, conventional-built homes. Uh, CG has twenty-three established mobile home parks already. Um, Realtor dot com shows that right now, today, there's a hundred and three mobile homes, uh, for sale in Casa Grande, mobile home parks. Eighty-three in Palm Park alone for sale on another website. Um, I can't remember which one. That was a, uh, another RV park, uh, real, real estate deal. Do we really need another mobile home park in Casa Grande? Um, our four zoning is to provide affordable family housing, which Mr. McGavin's business model is for fifty-five age restricted. So how does another, another mobile home park for the fifty, for fifty-five plus benefit CG families struggling to afford a housing? Alls I hear about is there's not affordable housing in Casa Grande. There's not enough affordable housing. See it all over on Facebook. So how is this gonna help benefit Casa Grande with affordable housing? Being close to industrial, they can put in some nice, small, affordable housings with that, with that cause certificate. And you can be on a lower, kind of targeting the lower income bracket of the city. I looked up Casgrans, the city of Casgrans median income is twenty-five thousand dollars a year. That is very low. I was surprised. I thought it used to be thirty-five. Um, so.
Depending if you're talking single family or family.
That, that's the median income, that's one person. So basically, you get a fifty-four thousand, I think it is, for a family. Okay, that's very low. When we talk about cause certificates, that disappears. This water thing is not gonna be easy to get over. The Colorado River Supply System is way over-lotted between all states that pull from it. We are ten feet away from the first tier sh- sh- cut. And then it doesn't take very long to get to the next cut and that's when cities will start losing water. And I can speak for hours about that. I'm not gonna take all your time. That's just kind of some information that's put out there. The, um, cause certi- Cause certificates are like gold. Um, I think they could put some lower-cost housing in there, button up against the industrial. It wouldn't affect the neighboring houses as much. Um, you can put in some small, nice eleven-hundred-square-foot homes on a decent-sized lot. Keep with the two-hundred-home plat. It has to stay two-hundred homes. Um, several emails back and forth to ADWR. The certificate is valid. It is good. The current owner, George McGavin, I believe, has a contract on the property. It's from what I understand. Um, the current owner can assign that certificate to a buyer. And they just have to do a name change because in real estate law, before they can sell a lot, they need to have that cause certificate in their name. Um, doesn't sound like a, too bad of a system to do, um, to get it done. Um, I will get back to, the mobile homes are not inexpensive. Purchased new, can easily lead a hundred thousand dollars depending on upgrades, amenities, while only qualify for a twenty-year mortgage. Add rental space in Sundance Parks at three-hundred-ninety-one ninety-three, I believe, is what's advertised on their site, um, for a rental spot to put your mobile home on. Plus park fees, utilities, sewer, trash, water costs, um, can be as much or more than average on a conventionally-built home. And the spaces are always a rental, never owned by the owner of the mobile home. The mobile home park can be sold and the new owner can tell the people that you have to leave. That's happened in the valley. Water, the current owners can transfer the cause. Okay, I'm sorry, I skipped a place here. Um, but the plat has to be, stay the same with two-hundred. Uh, working, working on changing the rules.
I didn't, I didn't lay out the rules very well, but, because I kind of, I didn't abide by them in the first place. But we usually have a three-minute limit.
Okay, sorry.
So, if you could wrap it up. I, we, I think we understand that you're against it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I'm pretty much on the last deal.
Okay.
Um, I think of about uh, you covered, there's not any assured water supply certificates available. And this near future doesn't look like any will be available. Um... They use, what I could calculate up was pretty close, maybe a little bit less water than conventional-built houses. Um, it's, everything I found was sixty to eighty gallons of water per day, per person, is what um, you could find. We're against it because of the, we don't think it's in the best interest of the city and its residents. Um, this area will have a high density of mobile home parks. It'll be pretty much all mobile home parks around that area. A nice mix of housing choices would be nice for the city. You have apartments on one side, not, pretty nice homes around, and then you have some mobile home parks. And um, they do a very good job of taking care of them. It's uh, um... The city has the opportunity to keep this property for affordable family homes, which will benefit the permanent city residents of Casagrande. And I, the last I knew, I thought there was only about six thousand P A Ds in the city of Casagrande, but I could be wrong. I'm not, I didn't research into, but I've heard something about there was six thousand available.
We have a lot more certificates of assured water.
Is there? I, I'd heard six thousand, but I don't know. I, if there's twenty years apart, there's a lot more. And that might be outstanding.
I think Mr. Tice is a little, little bit high on his estimate personally, but that's between he and I.
Yeah, I, I, it sounds super high to me, actually. But uh, and I also understand in the twenty-thirty plan, we're looking at trying to cut fifteen percent water use for residents. Um...
I'm glad somebody read, I'm glad somebody read that. Thank you.
I'd like to term it, I'm from an ag background. I have friends that have grandfathered water rights. They're losing a percentage of that in three years. Their ability to make income on their land is decreasing. This land's gonna get turned to income property for one person, from what I understand, does not even live in Casagrande. These farmers live in Casagrande. They've developed this town. They're losing a percentage of their grandfathered water right because ADWR has the authority to go in and take ten percent or more at any time. And that's a grandfathered water right. Um, so I take it very personally when it comes to water. I have a lot of good friends in the state of Arizona, different areas, ag, everything. A good friend of mine, we, that from Buckeye, we always talk, best friend from college. And we always term water as what is the best use? When you're growing a crop, building a house, developing a city, what's gonna be the best use of that water? Because there is a limited supply of it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Alright, the public hearing is still open. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please try and keep, you know, keep your comments as, as short as possible, please, because we wanna, we do wanna, we have one more to go tonight and I think it's gonna take a little while, too.
My name is Andres Aguirre. Um, my address is six-seven-one West Viola Street. I'm neighbors to John, actually. And actually, um, I'm just, I have a lot of the same concerns as, you know, my neighbors from both sides, um, about property value, about the traffic. I actually work at Hexcel, so I take O'Neill and I kinda wrap around that S-curve out, where the development's also going to be um, in place. So, that S-curve, right now it's night, uh, driving towards my work. So, just going there alone without any additional traffic is, you know, kind of a fifty-fifty. And also, um, a new concerns now with the water plan. I don't know if that's going to, you know, affect our residents and, and Desert Crossing and the one above us or... Um, but yeah, I'm, I'm with my neighbors on this one. I mean, if there's a better way or better usage of that property, building new houses. I know there's, they're building newer houses and north of, of that development as well. And it, I know a couple of people, they actually bought homes just brand-new off of there. So, that's one of my concerns as well, so.
Okay.
If it's, if anything, I'm against that as well, too, so.
Okay.
Cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay, the developer would have, like to uh, probably have a rebuttal. Ralph? Please keep, please keep your comments brief, though, if you would, please.
I couldn't hear you, Mayor. I'm sorry.
I said, please keep your comments brief, though.
They will be brief. Thank you, Mayor. In answer to the question with respect to the cost and the price of the homes, I talked to George McGavin outside. And the, just the manufactured home itself is between a hundred and eighty thousand and two-hundred-and-five. That's just the home to put on the lot. We have not done the math as a home builder would to determine, take the land cost divided a, and add all the improvements and divide by lots to get the, the lot cost. We haven't done that because they don't think in those terms. Okay, so that's the value uh, there. This property abuts five different land uses. Industrial, apartments, single-family, manufactured homes, and RV park. Our view is that this manufactured home residence is the right fit for those. And finally, with respect to the water, um, there is a major difference between a grandfathered water right certificate for farming, agriculture, mining, and industrial uses. They have nothing to do with the assured water supply that's required for a subdivision. And when you think about it, it really has little to do with supply. Because if, for example, assume this whole property were zoned for multifamily and someone proposed a four-hundred-unit apartment project here, they don't have to get a certificate of assured water supply, yet their four-hundred units receiving water. So, I would urge you not to get too conflicted in the understanding of those different things. This is a good use. It's a great operator. Um, and we urge your support of this case, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Since the, the floor is still open? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and uh, see if there are any further comments from the council. Alright. Go ahead.
Hey, Bob.
Bob?
I, I have a comment. We had a couple of, of people ask about home values uh, to the uh, to the east of this development. And I, I don't know that there's anyone that can predict what your home values are gonna do over the next ten, twenty years based on, on this development. What it can tell you is that in, in real estate, home values are determined by comparables. Uh, what, what did your neighbor's house sell for? What did, what did the guy three blocks down the street with a similar house, what, what does it sell for? I'm not aware of any, um, any red flag that says if you have a gated uh, professionally-run mobile home park near you, um, that that's going to drop the value of your home. These homes will not be factored in to those comparables because they're not comparable. They're, they're a, uh, they're a manufactured house sitting on a leased lot. So, when an appraiser comes in to say, you know, how much is your house worth? They, they look at, at real apples to apples, not apples to oranges. So, um, I, I would, I would probably uh, ask you to, to uh, put your mind at ease uh, over that value. I, I don't see, uh, the, the reality is uh, home prices all over Casa Grande, all over the state, are going up. And I, I don't, I really don't see any chance that, that this kind of a development would cause that to reverse. That was just my comment, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Lavender?
You know, I understand the concerns of the homeowners, but one of the concerns that I would have is a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar homes and they're not open, and they're not owning the property. There's gonna be some, these are gonna be people that have a high income. And when you talk about uh, lower-value homes, you're gonna have an increase of noise, increase of crime, and things like that, which I think might deter from the quality of life from your parents and things like that. So, that's, to me, is kind of the dilemma. And then, Ralph, one of the things, I didn't get a real strong sense that you were uh, eager to help us with the Thornton Road situation, but I realize it's not at this stage. But I would hope if we did get to that stage, that you might consider doing what they do. In, in Sun Lakes, at the Dobson entrance, where it's really restricted, who can come in and out off the Dobson Road at Sun Lakes on Thornton and try to push the traffic out to the east? I know that's not at this stage, but I think that would help on Thornton Road.
It's something else that helped a lot and I, and I appreciate everyone that spoke tonight, but there is all, already a lot of manufactured housing in that area. So, that, that's one reason it goes there. And to me, the water, it's actually gonna use less water, so technically, we should have more groundwater, right? I mean...
You lose the paper water.
Well, the paper water, yeah, but the real, the wet water.
Well, that, that's the argument right now. Paper water versus wet water.
So, a, and then again, this, you know, they have a proven track record here. And I just hope and, and want everyone to know the traffic seems to be a big issue. And that's at a different stage, just like Mr. Lavender said, but it'd be something I hope that the developer would help with and, and be sensitive of because, you know, that, a, a, and when, when you get more traffic like that, it drives a lot more of the changes of stop signs, streetlights and everything. But again, that's a different stage when they realize what actually is gonna happen in this area.
Lisa?
You know, and I, and I did wanna thank everyone for coming. I mean, obviously, you know, when, you know, these are your homes and your family's home and um, you're very passionate about, you know, how it's going to affect you and, and, but, but the arguments that have come up, it's just hard to deny the request when you're really looking at, you know, why, you know? When, when it comes to water issues, um, it's, you know, by, I, the certificates, of course, were concerning to me. But um, you know, as far as this actual supply, it's not gonna be affected by having the manufactured home versus the, the um, single family, family homes. The traffic, you're gonna have traffic no matter what, whether, you know, whatever product you have come in. Um, and so, and, and there are stages in the future for us to look at the traffic. Um, and then, and then the zoning pieces, when you look at what's surrounded, um, there's manufactured homes there already. There's apartments. You know, we've had people that don't wanna build because you have apartments right there. Um, so, and, and manufactured homes. So, um, it, it, it seems like a good transition to put, put these in there. And, and like you said, you know, I mean, when there's, you know, a high um, um, the, the cost of these are, you know, two-hundred-thousand dollars. And so, obviously, people are going to make sure that they maintain them and, you know, the income that you have to, to, to build and, and own that. So, I don't know. I mean, I, I mean, I, I really understand, you know, where you're coming from, but I just struggle with denying this request because like, Mr. Pugh made it actually a good point when he said, you know, it's good to say we want certain things in there, but why hasn't someone already built in there? Um, so maybe that demand isn't there and especially because of the different um, zoning a, around that property. So, this could be a, a good fit for that area.
Go ahead.
You know, I just, I'm not gonna echo what everybody else has already said because I do agree, but I, I do um, wanna let the homeowners know that I appreciate the fact that they came. And I think there was six that came to P and Z meeting and then we had a couple others that came, um, you know, with letters afterwards and, and, you know, their concerns are heard. Um, I'm not an expert on the water, so that does concern me. Um, but I do value the opinion of our staff um, in respect to what they feel, you know, we can and cannot handle. And as far as the planning and zoning, I know that there are several folks that have been represented on that um, you know, board that do know more about water than I do. And so, for it to pass unanimously tells me that they, they did some of their homework as well, so. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I'm conflicted on this project because I know it does, it does lend to a good transition from the industrial that's below it. Um, and there, but there is a pretty big buffer on O'Neill because you have the canal and then you're gonna have O'Neill Street. So, it's not like anything built there, whether it was a single-family home or a manufactured home, was gonna be sitting right next to, or backed up to a industrial park. Or, you know, a bunch of junked cars, which is what that one big area is that's south of it. Um... And you, and you didn't answer my concerns about my water, about my water, our water. Um, so I still have that concern. The fifty-five plus is a bit disturbing only from the standpoint that it doesn't help my workforce housing issues that I have here in the city. Um, so, you know, and whether this is a manufactured home or a single-family home, the traffic impact's gonna be very similar. Uh, other than in a manufact, in this manufactured home, that the entrance and exit can be much more controlled because it is gated. So, there'll be fences around it and then they'll have, even if they have four exits, it's still minimal compared to a neighborhood that might go in there as a single family. So, from that standpoint, it's actually less traffic impact on the surrounding uh, communities. Um, I am concerned about Thornton and I'm concerned about O'Neill. Uh, I, I really would like to see us finish those and widen Thornton. It needs it. Thornton's becoming a real hazard. Um, and will become more so as, as the area develops. So, like I said, I'm, I'm conflicted. I, I hate the thought of losing two-hundred certificates of assured water. I know that's, it's just paper. It's not wet water, but it's paper, which allows us to build a single-family home. Paul says twenty years. I say fifteen, maybe less. Anyway, that's an argument that we'll have later. And so, um, I don't know. I guess, I guess we'll call for the vote and we'll see where we go here. Anybody else have any other comments? Usually, I mean, I, I don't like to tell landowners- Usually, I mean, I don't like to tell a landowner how they should use their property and what they should really do with it until it affects, you know, neighbors. And in this particular case, I don't think it's going to, it will affect the neighbors adversely. It shouldn't affect your housing value to Bob's comments. You don't take a manufactured home and do a comparable to a single-family home, so... But it does butt up against a bunch of single-family homes. It also butts up against multifamily homes. And it also butts up against industrial, and it also butts up against manufactured homes, so... And then that big piece there above them, that's Arizona Water. So they've got a tower looking over the top of them, which we may light and paint someday. So you may be back here fighting us on the lighting and the painting of that water tower. So if you do come back and this does pass, I'm going to remind you of that. Okay. So, that being said, I've lost my place. It is a public hearing. We already closed the public hearing, so I'll consider an ordinance number, please, Gloria. It's L3.
Ordinance number 1178.239.1. An ordinance of the Council, the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to mobile home residential on approximately 58.77 acres of property generally located east of Thornton Road and north of O'Neal Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.239.1 as presented.
Second?
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
No.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
On this one, it's tough, but I think the good outweighs the bad by just a little bit because I think we got most of the concerns addressed, so I say yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Just because I've never voted no, I'm going to vote no. Because it still passes. All right, well, bye-bye, cause. Okay, I'll remind you when we light up that tower. Okay. The next item on our agenda is L4, which is also a public hearing. And this is a major amendment to the portion of the commercial component of the Mission Royale Planned Area Development. It's ordinance number 1178.228.1.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Good evening.
So this is a request by Mullen 360 for the Casa Grande Auto Park. Before I discuss the specifics of the amendment, I wanted to take the opportunity to give you a little bit of background and history about the Mission Royale PAD and its approved land uses. So the Mission Royale Planned Area Development Zone is bound by Interstate 10 to the west and Hacienda Road on the east. And the northern boundary is Florence Boulevard. Early road separates the PAD from the age-restricted, single-family residential community on the north side and the single-family residential family community on the south side. Although the majority of the PAD is allocated for single-family residential use, the area in red up towards the top-left portion of the PAD, the northwest portion, is designated for commercial uses. This PAD zoning was established in 2000, providing for a commercial area and then the single-family residential area surrounding it. The amendment is specifically to a 26.68-acre approximate portion of the commercial area. Within the commercial area currently, there's a number of uses allowed, such as grocery stores, including fuel and liquor sales if accessory, hotels, gyms, barber shops and salons, hospitals, sit-down restaurants, bars, offices, and general retail. And with the issuance of a conditional use permit reviewed by Planning Commission, uses such as tire sales, mounting and repair, car washes, churches, schools, and fast-food restaurants would also be permitted currently. The specific request is to take 26.68 acres of the commercial designated area of the Mission Royale PAD and zone it to accommodate an auto park or add auto park as an allowed use in that PAD. That 26.68 acres comprises, or is comprised of parcel five, where the Sam's Club building sits, and then the undeveloped portion to the south of the Sam's Club parcel, known as parcel eight. The intent is to develop this area as an auto park. And what that would entail is refurbishing the existing building of Sam's Club to accommodate a dealer or two within that space, or multiple dealers, I should say, and then develop parcel eight to the south to accommodate additional dealers, so that it creates an auto mall. Although the primary intent of the applicant is to amend the zoning to allow the auto park use, they are also asking for additional uses to provide additional options for any portions of this land not developed as an auto park. And that would include the request for rental centers, liquor stores, and convenience stores, which is currently prohibited in that zone district unless it's accessory to a primary use such as a grocery store, for example. Now, there's the potential for a 1.6-acre pad site located currently on parcel five that housed the former fuel station for Sam's Club. And again, you might wonder, well, how did that fuel station get there if one of the requests is to allow a fuel station and convenience store? But again, that fuel station existed because it was accessory to the Sam's Club. Without the Sam's Club use being in that building and instead it being car dealerships, the ability to redevelop that 1.68, 1.6-acre pad site as a convenience or fuel station would not be permitted in this zone currently. So the request does entail amending the PAD to add these new uses. However, within the amendment proposal, there are certain restrictions, and I'll read through these for you. So the development of rental centers, liquor stores, or convenience stores would be limited to a total of four acres among that 26.68-acre site. So where that could potentially be developed is, you know, any of the voids that you see on parcel five and eight. However, there's some additional setbacks, et cetera, that I'll discuss on later slides that would help direct where those buildings could ultimately be placed. Also, the proposal suggests that convenience stores with more than four pumps would be subject to a conditional use permit. So that would allow Planning Commission the ability to place additional restrictions on that, such as hours of operation. Any outdoor storage would be prohibited unless fully screened. Auto repair, including auto body associated with auto dealerships, must take place in an enclosed building, and vehicles awaiting body repair must be behind fully screened enclosure. And of course, I should say that any and all development here of parcel five or parcel eight, even the refurbishing of the Sam's Club building, would prompt a major site plan, which would be subject to additional public review. Because what would ultimately happen, even if they were to remodel the Sam's Club building and at this time propose no additional construction, they'd be changing the exterior finish of the building, so they would have to be updating the approved elevations that was a part of the original approved site plan. Some additional development standards that are being requested to be modified is to remove the 50% maximum light reflectivity value for exterior paint colors on bodies of buildings, and to remove the requirement for mission-style architecture. Now, the reason for these two requests is because to accommodate auto dealerships, there are specific franchise agreements that stipulate very strict design requirements that would be difficult to accomplish with these current limitations of the maximum light reflectivity value in the mission-style architecture. Another request that they're seeking is to allow the 15% minimum landscape coverage to apply to the 26.68 acres in total versus being applied specifically on each site within that area, should it be further subdivided or parceled out as individual development sites. When reviewing amendments to PADs, this type of amendment would be considered major because it involves a change of land use. There's certain uses that are currently prohibited in the PAD, and the request is to allow those uses. So in this situation, it would require both Planning Commission consideration and City Council approval. Planning Commission did hear this request at its January 7, 2021 hearing, and they did recommend approval. However, when reviewing PAD amendments, it's subject to meeting the following criteria. And the staff report provided to Planning Commission dived into these criteria more deeply. But I'm going to specifically talk about these here tonight with regard to the ones that are the most crucial to the decision. So these criteria highlighted in yellow, although they are PAD amendment review criteria, these are probably most appropriately addressed at the time of major site plan review. For example, that first highlighted item, the impact of the plan on existing and anticipated traffic and parking, they're, at the time of amending the zoning, it's really just the first step of the process. When the applicant comes in and requests a major site plan to be considered by Planning Commission, is when we would see a traffic impact analysis that would evaluate the current level of service of the roadways that the use would generate or impact. And it would suggest potential upgrades to the roadway network to ensure that that level of service was maintained at an acceptable category, and it would be reviewed by our city traffic engineer staff. And the same thing would be true with regard to the provision of utilities and grading because any new building proposed, we would require wastewater and water reports that would evaluate whether or not the infrastructure that existed could accommodate the proposed development. Same thing with grading and drainage and loading and unloading areas. We would evaluate whether it was a good fit and if it was sited adequately on the property with respect to adjacent land uses. The items that I've highlighted in red here are the ones that I want to specifically talk about this evening because I think these are the most important with regard to the overall impact that the PAD amendment could have on the surrounding uses. And also, these highlighted items in red speak more specifically to the comments that staff received as part of our public notification efforts. And really, it comes down to compatibility and the relationship of the plan, both on and off the property, and adequacy of the plan with respect to land use, lighting, and signage. So with regard to the city's public notification efforts, there was a number of comments received leading up to Planning Commission and then including after Planning Commission. Many of these comments, I know, were provided to you directly from the people concerned. To summarize the concerns, it comes down to this list. Essentially, liquor stores and convenience stores would be too close to the residences. A number of emails had sort of done an analysis of how many of these are within close proximity already, and the general feeling was there really wasn't the need for any more of these uses. There was concern that they operate at late hours, and they didn't feel like a 24-hour establishment was a good fit next to single-family residential, particularly age-restricted single-family residential, where there was a lot of value placed on the peace and enjoyment of the properties. And there was concern that it would affect the value of the homes. And so more to that point is they felt that the convenience stores, liquor stores, et cetera, would be quite disruptive, especially since this is available or the potential to locate these elsewhere was readily available, such as within the promenade. One email even suggested why not the auto dealership take advantage of the Phoenix Mark site, since it would be removed from the single-family area. And just a lot of sentiment with regard to being the wrong mixture of uses in the area. There was concern about the increase of traffic, including large truck deliveries. Bright, tall, excessive lighting was a concern and how that would impact residences. Loud noise from the deliveries and loudspeakers that are associated with dealerships. And the smell from dumpsters and the sound from trash collection, and also the excess signage that is typically associated with auto dealerships, and bright reflective buildings that could be seen from the residential area. They felt that there would be a negative impact on their neighborhood. So because commercial has long been designated in this area, granted, not for these four specific uses that are being requested to also be allowed, but there's already been a number of existing compatibility measures in place to help mitigate concerns between commercial use and residential use. So firstly, there is to be, and this exists in the current PAD and will carry forward with the amendment, a 25-foot landscaped buffer along the eastern portion of the commercial area, just on the other side of the eight-foot-tall wall between the single-family area and the commercial area. Also, there exists a 30-foot-wide easement for a water line and vehicular access to the Arizona Water Well Company site. So effectively, between that 25-foot buffer that would ultimately be landscaped and that 30-foot-wide access and utility easement, there's a 55-foot distance before structures could be placed on the property. Additionally, there's a 75-foot setback for buildings over 35 feet in height. So buildings within the first 75 feet of the residential area would be limited to a height of 26 feet, and then beyond that 75 foot, they'd be allowed to go as tall as 35. So there wouldn't be any immediately tall structures, at least, you know, taller than 26 feet, until you cleared 75 feet from the residential area. And then also, there would be a minimum of 15-foot landscaping adjacent to public right-of-way. Some additional compatibility measures being proposed with this PAD amendment include a lot to do with lighting and some other development standards that would help mitigate the impact. So the maximum light pole height within the first 75 feet from residential area would be limited to 25 feet in height. The maximum light pole height beyond that 75-foot area would be limited to 35, which is the current height of the light poles presently within the Sam's Club parking lot. Light from poles or light emanating from any signage or buildings are to have no light trespass at the outer perimeter of the property adjacent to residential property. And it would be required to follow our existing city code ordinances with regard to light control. Use of loudspeakers would be prohibited. When I was... When I was working with the applicant, that was the first concern I thought of, is when I think of an auto dealership, I think of those loudspeakers, you know, paging James as cars ready. But the applicant informed me that a lot of the present and modern dealerships have gone away from the loudspeakers. A lot of the customers and employees alike rely on cellphone texts or headsets, and so there's not a need for loudspeakers. And currently, as proposed within their PAD amendment, that would be restricted. Outdoor storage must be fully screened by a block wall at least six feet in height. And signage can often be a very complex topic. And within a PAD, there often is not set signage requirements, because it's really going to be unique to what's being proposed. And our standard sign code does not speak to signage requirements within planned area development zones, because a planned area development zone is a customized zone district that gets to create its own rules, subject to the approval of specific approving bodies. So, what this request also proposes is that a comprehensive sign plan for any new signage proposed would be subject to review and consideration by Planning Commission, which would be a separate public hearing. And it would allow more detail to be focused just on the nuances of signage, which can be quite sensitive. So, by divorcing it from the PAD is an advantage, because it allows staff and the neighbors and the applicant opportunity to work on signage issues. Much of these I've already discussed in my presentation, but just to summarize the various compatibility measures, I don't think it hurts to go over these, especially given the number of concerns expressed. So, loudspeakers would be prohibited. Light poles are limited to 25 feet in height within 75 feet of the residential area. Otherwise, they could be as tall as 35 feet, the same as existing. Light from poles buildings or signage are to have no light trespass at the outer perimeter of the property adjacent to residential property. Signage is subject to separate comprehensive sign plan approval by Planning Commission, which would be a public hearing. Auto repair, including auto body, is to occur within enclosed buildings. Vehicles awaiting body repair service are to be within a screened area by means of a masonry wall at least six feet in height, to be operated by the dealership, not a third party. Outdoor storage associated with rental centers must be fully screened. Convenience stores with more than four fuel pumps shall be subject to a conditional use permit. Convenience stores, rental centers, or liquor store sites would be limited to a total of 15% of the amendment area, which comes out to four acres. And again, there would be further major site plan review to evaluate the appropriateness of elevation styles, traffic impact, and other infrastructure concerns. Specifically with regard to lighting, due to technological advances with LED, is it can be designed to be very pointed and directed at what is chosen to be illuminated. As you see in this graphic on the left, the parking lot is well-lit. You can see very clearly that the lights are working. But immediately, off to the bottom, it's, there's suddenly a much darker, low-light situation, and that's one of the advantages to the LED technology. And the other photos are just to show you that there is existing signage there that was in place as the Sam's Club site. There's a pylon sign, parallel to I-10, and there's one on Florence. And so, there is signage opportunity that can currently be used without having to amend the comprehensive sign plan, or should the comprehensive sign plan not be successful, there would be some allowances for signage based on the infrastructure that's presently there. At its January 7, 2021 meeting, Planning Commission did unanimously forward a recommendation that City Council approve this PAD amendment. There were technical modifications that were part of that approval, but they've all been And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
We can go again, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll throw it back up.
Well, I did have one, like, clarification. It said that a convenience store with four pumps, more than four pumps, would have to be conditionally permitted. That's what I was talking about earlier, Mayor. It was a CUP. And any other auxiliary would be, have to go through another site plan review? Is that what you said?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, so with regard to how it's currently being proposed, if a convenience store with four pumps or less were proposed, it would be allowed by right with the approval of a major site plan? If they were to propose more than four pumps, in addition to the major site plan, it would be subject to a conditional use permit.
Also, rental centers, are we talking like furniture rental type, or car?
I would see furniture stores more as general retail. I think what, and the reason why I'm using "I think" is because there's no definition in the PAD. But the way that staff has interpreted rental centers is to imply like equipment rental. So, any outdoor equipment would have to be fully screened and enclosed.
Okay, so like, yeah, I couldn't figure out exactly what the rental center, I read a lot of it, right? So, like, equipment?
Yeah, I think some of the emails were saying furniture rental.
Yeah. And then, maybe car rental, too? I mean, I don't.
Car rental would be part of the auto sales and services.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Yeah, just, okay.
Jeff, did you have a question?
The Circle K on Florence and Pottybaum, how many acres is that store on, approximately?
The new one?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lavender, I don't know right off the top of my head. I want to say it's.
Do you think it's four or eleven?
I don't know. I'd have to confirm that for you.
Then a conditional use permit only comes to the council if the applicant appeals the decision appeals, the Planning Commission, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, we may have some more questions when we get done, but I want to open the floor to the public. This is a public hearing. So, is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak? Okay, well, they're public. They're welcome to speak if they'd like to speak.
Stretch.
Yeah, I know.
Mayor McFarland, councilmen, councilwomen, thank you for letting us be here. The only thing I can really add that you may not find in your presentation of materials that your city staff has done a very nice job doing, is a little bit about our background. Mullen 360 is a derivative of my dad being a car dealer, my grandfather being a car dealer. I got interested in real estate and for a long time chased the idea of a real estate niche, and that grew to a national effort around the United States. And we've been involved with about 1,200 car dealership sites in the United States and dozens of auto parks. I had mentioned in planning and zoning, names started coming back, because we were talking to folks such as Gary Cropper, Henry Brown, so that tells you how long we've had an eye to Casa Grande. As late as the hour is, it's still a pleasure to be here. Then it might be in Bedford, New York, or Dulles, Washington, DC, or other places where we have done developments, so, and California, other places. So, I wanted to give you that background, and there often is discussion in any of our developments that hover around three things: noise, traffic, and light. And so, I'm happy to address any of those comments or questions. Briefly, I'll touch on the three of them. The traffic, at this specific location, no matter which brands may show up and how this may be built, the traffic won't approach what was there before, prior. Many cases, we're in a greenfield site. Repurposing a building feels good. I like seeing a building with new life and new things as a developer, but we often only get an opportunity to develop on the land and repurpose a facility. And I believe those reports all come later, as it relates to the traffic. In regards to the noise, what was mentioned earlier is very true, and if you, next time you're out buying a car, the, you probably pay attention that the noise is gone, those loudspeakers and the bat wing lights and the gravel, and the person with the striped coat and the cigarette in his mouth telling you how cute your kid is, kind of that retail exposure has gone, and it's been really matched to the customer today. So, loudspeakers are, there isn't a development we've done in 34 years that has loudspeakers. I'm not going to be here either. As it relates to light, we've been benefited with the LED technology quite a bit. And the example that I use to car dealers as well, because it's hard sometimes to understand the technology and lighting, LED continues to evolve, but the light trespass that James put up is exactly right. You can put light on a subject and have a two-degree trespass. So, within two degrees behind it, no light hits it. Of course, there may be some reflective light and other things, but as it relates to direct light, and as the photo showed, it's really a remarkable way to be a good neighbor, and it's been wonderful in our 34 years of being a better neighbor with our lighting. The example I give is when you go camping, you can tighten up that camp light to a very small pin, or widen it open to the whole campfire, or the whole area of the campfire. Every LED, including the one on the back of your phone, those little pieces there is lensed, and so, as long as they're lensed correctly, it really allows us to be a good neighbor. So, I'll stop there, but those are the three pieces I normally come across, and we're really happy to be here tonight and excited for this development.
Ms. Melos, could you also educate council on some of the SAM's restrictions in terms of your deed? I think that's interesting information, I think important for them to hear.
It is really important, and some topics were brought up in that dialogue. These are single-spaced comma restrictions out of our sales agreement. They're straight out of the sales agreement. There are hundreds on here. And one of the.
Highlight some of the important ones, like grocery stores and things like that, that our neighbors are asking us to build.
Yeah.
So, we highlighted things like grocery stores, supermarket, pharmacies, things that, discount department stores. All of those are in a bucket that says no, and it's just Walmart, which is SAM's parent company's way of protecting their territory even when they're gone. So, when the question came up recently, we went ahead and made a phone call, actually sent an email, and then a phone call to Teresa Hibbert at Walmart, and she was very quick to get back and point out that, no, we would not, in fact, give you the opportunity to have any amendment to your deed restricted use. It's a 50-year restriction. We would be more than happy to build a Sprouts, a Trader Joe's, anything on the site that we could, we're restricted to do so. And there are many other restrictions. Some of them, we would all agree, don't belong there no matter what, but there are many that might show up, that might even support the trade area, especially as growth to the north and the east were to continue over time. But we're just restricted from doing it. We're a developer that I think we're known for being very good neighborly developers, and we'd be thrilled to build a Trader Joe's if we could.
Great, thank you for that. Bob?
I have a long comment before I finally ask you a question. I just want to say I'm really excited about this project. It's at probably the most prime corner in our community. It's a good gateway project, I-10 and Florence Boulevard. I think we're all envisioning a very modern auto mall with major car manufacturer dealerships in there. Is there anything you can tell us to assure us that there, it won't be a collection of buy here, pay here, used car lots?
That's an excellent question. So, normally, my answer is it's too expensive, and out of the 1,200 car dealership sites I've done and the dozens of auto malls we've been involved with, we've never had a toe to note once. But the root of your question is addressed this way. In order for Bob's Toyota to be approved on that site, you need OEM approval. The OEM is Toyota, so that's the franchisor. Bob Toyota would be the franchisee. In order for that to occur, they have to approve not only the site, your financials, your background, your team, everything else, they also have to approve your designs. And so, their interest is always to promote the latest design that they have out there. For Toyota, I think it's Roman numeral nine now, that they call it. So, they upgrade constantly, and in our consumer shoes, we might see it more in a McDonald's, where five years ago, maybe it was a certain color, now it's stacked rock, and now it's arches with different things. And as those progress, the OEMs progress their customer experience as well. And so, the only way that dealers would be able to make this site their home is if they agree to very high standards that the OEMs mandate: materials, color, interiors, interior experience, size of conference rooms. They're very, very specific, and those all have to be approved. The dealer has to agree. The dealer would only agree if they think there's a future. And so, I think that the dealers that we talk to and will continue to talk to see a future in Casa Grande, with all the wonderful news, employment, and housing that's here since the Gary Cropper days, maybe it's finally time that we get to business. So, I believe it is, and the OEMs are quite strict. In many cases, they're more strict than hotels, more strict than fast foods. If you want to see some of the recent designs, just look in any metro center that's new. We did Santian Motorplex, Superstition Springs, we did the Penske Mall in North Scottsdale, Tempe Autoplex, Surprise 303 Auto Show, Scottsdale Auto Show is our most recent development. That's a perfect example. All those stores are built in the last three years, and just look at those and imagine the facades of those put on and around and undulated on the SAM's box, and you'll start to get a feeling of the type of aesthetic that would have come with the effort.
I appreciate that, and like I said, I'm excited to see it come about. I think that'll be a great addition to our community.
Lisa?
You know, and I agree. Of course, I was excited, but then when I started seeing all the emails come through, and, you know, you talked about being a good neighbor, and I really appreciate you working with our staff and trying to identify and go over the whole compatibility measures and work with them. I mean, you can see that you outlined some of the concerns and addressed them of how you can be that good neighbor, but, you know, but it, you know, it does seem like a great location, especially when you think what can go in that area? I mean, it is really ideal, and, you know, when you look at where retail is going with bricks and mortar, you know, I mean, a lot of places are closing, so, but no, so I'm excited to see this, but I just wanted to, you know, I know a lot of the people that wrote letters aren't here tonight, but I'm sure they're watching, and I just want them to know that, you know, we really appreciate them providing that input. I mean, that's what this whole process is about, is having a public hearing, getting the input, and I appreciated the input, definitely took it into consideration, but I do feel that our staff and the applicant have worked through a lot of the issues that they have, but I, you know, do sincerely thank them, and I hope as we move forward, you know, with traffic analysis and some of the other conditional use permits, there's going to, you know, they get involved and provide input. But I appreciate you being patient with them, and, but I'm glad that they did provide some of the concerns that they have.
Mayor and councilwoman, I appreciate that the police chief earlier didn't stop us for the many times we drove on their roads, looking between their houses, trying to understand viewpoints, and everything else, so that we were good neighbors.
Thank you.
Donna?
So, I have a couple of things, so indulge me for just a minute until my voice goes out. First of all, thank you. I know that I had time to spend on the phone with you this past week, and, you know, this is, you know, some of the letters that we got. We got a lot of them, between staff and what I received, there was well over 30. And the top three things that stood out to me was the lighting, the traffic, and the noise. You have addressed those, and I appreciate that. We will have, you know, different hearings along the way, so I think that this is a starting point. We're not anywhere near where, you know, they think we're going to be. And I appreciate the fact that so many of our residents ask these questions, because they challenge us to make sure we know what we're doing, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate the fact that you all have been very patient and have answered the same questions dozens of times in many different. the same questions dozens of times in many different ways. And it wasn't to trick you, but it was because we needed to know that answer. So I appreciate that. You know, there were a lot of people very much in favor of development in this area, but they were concerned about some of the things that were going to go in there. And I think that we need to ease their mind as we go forward and help them understand that this is a process where some things will have to come back to the planning and zoning. I will say that I am extremely disappointed in SAM's club. And I think that, you know, I know that it's a business, but I felt long ago, and I've been very vocal about this, that they have left us high and dry. I'm disappointed in all the, the things that they have put on anybody that wants to purchase that land. That being said, you have worked through those. You have jumped through so many hoops because of that, and I appreciate that you didn't give up on Casa Grande. We are worth it, and we're worth fighting for, but so are our citizens. And so I hope that as we move forward, you will continue to be, you know, respectful of, of their concerns because it is, it is their home. Lastly, I do have to mention that some of the letters, and I know that you all, a lot of you got them, there were so many people that were very professional and supportive. There were several that were not, and I'm disappointed in that, but that does not outweigh the process. And, and I will say that what we're going to have in this location is far better than what SAM's club has left this site and how they have taken care of the site. So I think that, yes, it will be improved, but it will be a classy improvement, and I appreciate that. I would hope that as we move forward, that the community in that area understand that this kind of business doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have a lot of crime. We're not going to have bums on that side of the freeway, and that, you know, that there are people that deserve to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Mr. Herman?
I hate following Donna very well, but I do appreciate your patience.
You can just say ditto.
Yeah, well, I have a few other comments. I do appreciate your patience, and if you, you say Gary Cropper, you've been very patient because I used to rake their yard one night. And his wife paid better than him, but we won't leave that. But, you know, I appreciate, because the first, the first things I started hearing was, we don't want an auto mall because of the lights. We don't want, you know, because of this, because of the loudspeakers, because of the views. And that, at the planning commission, on a 7-0 vote with your guys' help, every single one of those got addressed. And then the next letters I'm getting is, hey, we like the auto mall. And that's a good example of how you're working with the neighborhood. And Jim's presentation really helped me with the 75-foot buffer on the side against the homes there. And that was good. And it just goes to show how willing you are and easy to work with, I think. And one of our biggest goals, me as a council, I think us as a city, is to repurpose these large buildings. And here we have someone who wants to do it, someone who's good to work with, something that's going to create a lot of sales tax dollars, you know, something that's good for our community, and we need to help work together so that we can make these things happen, to make the best decision for everyone. And you answered a question I was going to have, is you're going to have a facade for each type of dealership on the building? Okay, that's a neat idea, too. You know, and, and the other thing that, that helps is that all of these other ancillary decisions will have to come back, and they'll get another bite at the apple and make sure something. And I, I did a quick calculation to answer Mr. Lavender's question about, it's about two acres, according to Google Maps, for that Circle K. And one of the other concerns I got about the, the convenience store was crime. So the police chief and his staff helped me out very much. And, I mean, I can go into a lot of these, but basically, the Circle K, which I think is the most similar, the one on McCartney, close to the freeway, close to a neighborhood. In the last year, January 1st through December 31st, there were 12 calls for service, one per month at the Circle K. And the neighborhood behind there, again, 16 calls for service in the neighborhood, which is, you know, comparable to another neighborhood that we pulled this near, Circle K, 19 calls for service. And my own neighborhood is 500 feet from a Circle K, my own house, 1,000 feet from a 24-hour Circle K. And I personally have never experienced any problems. Actually, it's convenient. But, I mean, I say that fine, but it really is, you know? But again, to alleviate people's concerns is that you're willing to listen, we're willing to listen. I appreciate all the emails. I think I answered all of them. I really tried. And then, but again, it's not, tonight, we're not saying, oh, yeah, you can put a 12-pump Circle K there by any means. I mean, it has to come back before it can do anything. So I appreciate you working with it, and I appreciate repurposing this building that could sit vacant for a longer time. And I like the idea of, of the other one, but I'm, auto dealerships need to be near the freeway. I'm sure that's your business plan, so, you know, it's a great location.
Anyone else? All right. Well, I just want to add my thanks and, and my ditto to Donna's comments and really, you know, don't, don't give up on us. We, we, I think it's a good reuse of that product and, or that piece of property. And I know you'll do a good job on the other pieces as well, so, so thank you.
We will. Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilman, thank you.
Sorry we kept you senior so late. All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing, unless there's any other public who wants to speak. I didn't ask that. Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing, and we'll move to L4 and consider ordinance number, please, Gloria.
One second, please.
Took too long. I made you lose your place.
Yeah, I lost my place. Ordinance number 1178.228.1. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to a portion of the commercial component of the Mission Royale planned area development adopted for property generally located at the southeast corner of I-10 and Florence Boulevard, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 1178 dot 228 dot 1.
Thank you. It's been moved, and I have a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tam Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. That's the end of our public hearings tonight. The next item on our agenda is reports. It's 10 o'clock. I remind you to keep your reports short. So I'll start with you, Mr. Huddleston.
Mayor, I did attend the periodic, I guess not monthly, CAG board meeting on January 27th. It was held via Zoom. Once again, not a lot of things that dealt with us, although I, I do appreciate being able to attend the meetings and assist in discussion with all the many projects that they are working on. The one thing that they did bring up that does affect us, although I don't have any details on it, but they talked about the transportation study that they are involved in, but I believe will be presented to us by Sun Corridor. But anyway, that's pending, and hopefully we'll see that soon. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Matt? Thank you, Mayor. I have a few. I just wanted to say how sad it was, and I'm sure everyone, to learn the passing of David Snyder. Great influence on our city, served our city well in many different capacities and county, and all-around good guy and fun, funny guy. So it's just a shock, and he will be missed in our community. Also, the youth commission is going to do a Garden of Sunshine cleanup because it's an outdoor activity, and they can socially distance, and the weather will hopefully be nice that weekend. So that's it.
Great. Lisa?
And I just wanted to send my deepest condolences to David Snyder's family. Of course, it's a huge loss, and I know a lot of our staff has dealt with them and just, it's still shocking. I also wanted to share good news. I'm sure you guys have seen that Merlin De Souza, she's come here many times and presented with, with Mr. Morris. One of the students at Casa Grande Union is going to be going to Harvard next semester. So it was no surprise when I read it. I mean, I just, you know, you just see everything she's done. And when she comes in and meets here at the office, or office, at our meeting, so I'm excited for her. And I know I mentioned last meeting, the whole eviction prevention program that Deputy Chief Leos and Kara have been working on, and it looks like that's been extended to March 31st with the, the eviction moratorium. But Chief Leos has been really good with prevention. He has been, they set up a meeting with some of the apartment complexes throughout town and landlords, and still moving forward with providing information on how people can get money to help them with, with, with rent. Because of course, we want to try to keep people housed. It's way easier keeping them housed than getting them on the street and rehousing them. So, and this, this county has $14 million that they're working with the ES in providing to people for, for rent. So that's pretty much it. Just stay safe. Don't let your guard down. This virus, COVID, is still out there, and we can't let our guards down.
Donna?
Just a couple of things, even though I was in quarantine with my husband for two weeks, with COVID, I still had the opportunity, thankfully, because of Zoom, to attend a couple of meetings. The annual chamber board meeting happened. And then also, just kudos to Steve Miller from, that represents the Casa Grande area for the Penal Partnership. He is our current chair and represents as well. So I was able to attend that and learn about our new board of supervisors, that, you know, we need to be good neighbors with them and, and make sure that we know what they're doing as well. Lisa and I both had the opportunity with Steve Weaver and a couple other folks on the CARES funding, the grant reviews again. So we've been working on that the last couple of weeks. Of course, David Snyder being on our planning and zoning has contributed much to our community. So condolences to his family, as well as the Kaywood family for Mr. Kaywood's passing. That's it.
Mr. Lavender?
Well, that young lady that's going to Harvard went to Valago Middle School, so we're very proud as well. We have more headed that way. But this Friday is the deadline for the Cesar Chavez scholarships for this year, so if you can keep, if you can help spread the word on that. Larry, I enjoyed seeing your award on Twitter this last weekend. Congratulations. I'd also want to share. I also want to share condolences for David Snyder. I had the unique opportunity to work with David on the city level, on the campaign level, and he was on our school board for 18 years. And such a hole has been on our board now, as he was the president, with brand-new board members. And so it's going to be a while to replace all that institutional knowledge. One thing I always respected about David is whenever I asked for him to come to an assembly to recognize students, he never missed the opportunity to recognize students. He loved it. He was one of those rare politicians that loved campaigning as much as sitting in the back room talking about water. And I much preferred the campaign side of David than talking about water. He will be missed, and I'm going to miss talking to him and him telling me what I'm supposed to be doing up here.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just have one question to Larry Raines. How did you get the award for City Manager of the Year when you're a contractor?
It's not City Manager of the Year, it's the John DeWalt Award.
It's the same, it's the same thing.
Touche.
I just can't say his name.
That's funny.
Well, I, I too want to send my condolences out to the Snyder family and to Marilyn, and I think that it was a sad day for us last week. Also, just to remind everybody, the CARES Act Part III is still out there in terms of our businesses, individual needs. So please check our website. And I know that Donna and, I think Lisa and Stephen have been working as a committee, and I think McKenzie, too, right? McKenzie's part of that group, so.
And Carla?
And Carla, yes. Thank you, Carla, too. So get those in, get those requests in. We may look at trying to extend that, but that'll come back to council, so, depending on what kind of activity we've, we've seen. And then I did want to give you all an update on the PRTA. We had our board meeting last week. It is moving forward, and it's actually moving pretty quickly. We're trying to anticipate that the Superior Court will give us a verdict, probably not until the middle of summer. So the good news of that, at least according to our attorney, is that the longer it takes, the better it is for us, which means that they don't think the Supreme Court would drag it out if they wanted to stop the collection of the tax. So we believe that that will continue right now. It's about $51 million that's in the escrow account. We are now working with all the cities and municipalities to collect the fact sheets that will be used to create the IGAs. That will all come back to you all. You will all end up seeing this in the end. But the fact sheet, for example, on Thornton Road, what's it going to cost, who's going to pay for it, you know, all the details on that project. And that will be probably one of the first projects that the PRTA will pay for. So we need to be ready for it, and I know staff is working on it. And that then rolls into an IGA, and then all the IGAs roll into what's called a transportation improvement, a project or a tip, tiff, tip, excuse me, a tip. And anyway, that's where we're at. And they're putting all those IGAs together, and you'll start to hear a lot more about it. And then just remind everybody, keep an eye on your legislature, legislators. There, there's a lot of bills in there, and a lot of them are bad. So I'll continue to forward that to you, and if you will please reach out to your, you know, your, the people you know in the legislature, whether they're our representative or not. Even if you know others, which I know you do, any communication you have with them would be appreciated. We're also putting together and working on the final touches of the Growing Horizon magazine, the next one, the new one, working with the Blossom Group. So you'll start to see some materials coming out of that. We're actually have a video, five-to-eight-minute video that we'll be able to use and also have on our website. So it should be, it should be a pretty cool piece that we can use in presentations and some other stuff that kind of highlight Casa Grande and what's going on here. Lucid and all that other cool stuff, because we have video from Lucid, we've got video from all kinds of stuff. So you'll start to see that. When it gets a little closer and before it goes to press or something, I'll make sure that y'all get a copy. And at least look at it electronically so you can kind of give us your two cents on it and get your input. So that's all I have. I actually have a lot more. But I, I'm not going to go into the COVID numbers. They are, they are, the, the last five days, they have come down. I've talked to the hospital, they're still at 170% capacity on their ICU, which means they have ICU everywhere and scrambling for people still. They're, they're not feeling as pressed, so, which means there's a little, little steam coming off the pot that's relieving some of the pressure, but we can't let up our guard. I mean, I know as more people get vaccinated and we get the second vaccines, I know I'm scheduled for my second one this week, so I'll let you know how that goes. Larry, too, aren't you? When are you getting yours? Yeah. I knew you were just before me. Yeah, on Thursday. So if you don't see us Thursday, Thursday or Friday, you'll know, you'll know we're at home in bed. Okay. Any other comments? All right. The city council meeting is adjourned.